I'd like to call the meeting order for March 23rd, 2022. We'll start with the pledge.
To the flag of the United States of America, in which this republic to which stands one nation, under God, indivisible, limited in justice for all.
It's kind of like a national anthem. You know how it's always back? Okay, um, warrant bill you all signed up?
I signed.
Yep, good. Approval of the agenda?
Make a motion that we approve the agenda.
I'll second that. All in favor? Minutes of the last meeting.
I'll make a motion to approve the minutes of March 2nd.
I'll second that. All in favor? Town administrator, weekly update.
Okay, I've got a list. Been saving special. All right, um, the first, which we mentioned at the budget workshop, I just want to go on and officially tell you that, um, we have been working with the planning board and code office on the zoning ordinances. They are, um, finishing them. As I understand it, they had a workshop today as well at four o'clock that they were going to look at the recommendations. They did, um, agree and support the town's attorney looking over them. So, um, Mr. Lenkowski has reviewed all of them. He gave his recommended changes and they were looking at those today and they'll vote on final articles tomorrow, so we'll have them by Friday. Uh, they are going to be in front of the Warren Finance this coming Monday, um, along with, um, conversations over the ARPA discussions and capital improvement, or not capital improvement, I should say, the undesignated fund reserve use is what they're going to be discussing on Monday. If, um, any of you want to go, after that, the April 4th meeting, or the, is it the 4th, Dennis? The 1st? April 4th, uh, is which will all go. That's the, uh, municipal management and general government, so we'll all go to that one together. On Thursday, April 14th, there is a York County Clerk networking event that happens every year. Um, looking for permission to close our office at 5:30. It's at six o'clock at the Old Ladies. We normally go, it's all the clerks get together once a year. And, uh, I believe this year someone from the Secretary of State's office in Inland Fisheries is coming down, so we'll advertise being open from 3:00 to 5:30. It is day before Tax Day, so plan accordingly. Um, and the next request is from the library. Uh, you recall the nice little padded area we have over there with the picnic table that everybody can use? Uh, this is an email that I received from the librarian. Uh, "The library has received memorial donations in the name of Beatrice Rue. The library trustees use memorial funds to create something more permanent in the name of the deceased. One idea was to bu- build a pergola over the picnic table to provide shade. The Rue family said they loved this idea. We have several people who use this area either for their personal computer, work, hold meetings, or just eat. This area is south facing the sun, so it can be fierce. Although an umbrella would work, we sometimes get high winds up there and the library has very limited storage space, so it's not ideal." So they're asking for permission before they move forward with quotes. So it's all going to be paid for out of this, um, these memorial donations they got for, from Mrs. Rue, um, who just for clarity is somehow my husband's father's second cousin, Mrs. Beatrice. She was a very sweet lady. She's got a lot of family in town. Um, but it's a nice idea. Do you guys have any concerns with it?
I mean, um, what'd she call it?
It's pergola.
Pergola. I'm gonna call it a, what is it? Pergola. I'm gonna say a canopy. I practiced saying pergola several times.
Would it be something, I mean, I have no, no, no problem with it. I mean, would, but it might be something, you might want to see some sort of a, I don't even know what they're gonna do.
Yeah, it's just a, it's like a, it's a canopy, a permanent canopy over it.
Yeah.
I mean, it's not going to be any bigger than the picnic table and the little pad that's over there.
No, I, I have no issue with it at all.
Tom, do you have any concerns with the?
Pergola.
Pergola.
No, no problem.
And, and say it for us, Tom.
I'm sorry?
Say the word.
I have no problem.
I think she wanted you to say pergola.
Pergolia, pergola.
Oh, pergola, yeah.
What'd you say? Say it again.
Pergola.
Pergola. All right. I like David's thought of the canopy.
Canopy is way better.
All right, so we'll let them know that we, and it's a nice process. We go out there as well when we, when we can.
Yep.
Um, next is just information that the, uh, school passed over to us. They have established, um, a scholarship fund in memory to honor the life of Joseph Laterno. Joe, a graduate of Unity College, was a man of many talents, including landscaping, farming, forestry, heavy equipment operator and entrepreneur in the business world. Acton was fortunate to have our road commissioner until the time of his passing. As you can see, Joe was interested in many things and involved in many, um, many different endeavors. Therefore, the scholarship will be awarded to a high school graduate from Acton who is pursuing a postgraduate education in any area of study. If you wish to honor Joe and be a part of his legacy, donations to the scholarship can be made at, uh, it's got a mailing address. The school actually has, uh, envelopes that they've tacked up there as well. Scholarships, um, scholarships, envelopes are going to be available at the school and, um, they just thank you in advance for considering to donate or encouraging kids to apply. It's just a scholarship they set up for him.
Cool.
Okay, they've gotten some money in and they wanted to put it to good use. The Chair of the Road Committee sent us, um, all an email from Maine DOT regarding a 2022 virtual maintaining local bridge minor spans in big culverts class that's coming up. It's $25 per municipality. Um, she did reach out to me to see if, um, you know, the board, how the board felt about it. She thought that the selectmen, road commissioners, warrant and finance and anyone else would be, um, welcome and possibly would benefit from it.
I've already done it, so.
So there's three sessions. There's April 5th, 6th, and 7th, both, all from 8:00 to 11:00. As I understand it, because it's virtual, I didn't, uh, talk to Leslie, that she wants us to, and we'll set it up here. We'll drop down the, uh, projector and run it here so that people can come. So it's a $25 cost and it'll be open to anybody. Do you have any concerns with me handling that for them? Check availability and get it scheduled. Uh, just a reminder that, uh, the deadline for the audit is next Wednesday, the 30th. As of today, uh, we were able to get the motherboard that we requested, that you purchased from the alarm company that was here and installed. Um, when he was done installing it and doing everything, he also tested all of the poll stations and all of the sensors and readers. So everything seems to be in good working order. Next week is a reminder that you have the medical director coming in. You'll have an executive session, um, and an open session. Um, the, the medical director, the individual that, um, the only individual that was interested in it that you guys have kind of reviewed, did make a couple of minor changes to the contract after our attorney looked at it. Uh, he really just pulled out a section. Um, so I sent it back to our attorney. He didn't have any concerns with what he pulled out. Do you remember the section about whether or not he was going to show up as a paramedic on scene? And we talked about employee versus independent contractor. He actually took that out and doesn't intend on performing in that level, as we understand it. So, uh, attorney more didn't have any concerns, but need you to look at it because the hope next week, after you meet with him, um, and review the resumes a little more, is that you'll sign that next week and we'll get him, get him going. So it's in your email box, in your inbox. Um, I also sent you an email regarding an RFP that's going around regarding Goat Hill. And I know that, um, David, you received a call about this. Um, we have not met in a couple of weeks, um, so we did have this information a little sooner. But, um, Three Rivers put together a, an RFP for work that they want, that they're having done at the, um, at the property, primarily to continue working on the trail and make it more ADA compliant. Um, it's a bid process that they're going through, that they have to go through for the grant process. Um, we did have a, a conversation with Carl, um, and he understands now more clarity of the agreement that you guys signed with them that really they need to be coming to us in advance for that type, at least so you can review it, give any thoughts. Um, but at this point, it's posted. It's well-written. Um, so there's certainly no concerns with it, but, um, wanted to make it aware. And I'll get it on the town's website tomorrow.
Called me about it.
I told him to.
Yeah.
Yeah.
Yeah, he went over the whole thing.
Yeah, and I emailed it to you guys so you could look at it. Um, public hearing notice that has been running for, um, about a week and a half now is that, uh, the town of Acton will hold a public hearing on Thursday, March 24th, which is tomorrow, at 6:00 PM at the Acton Elementary School for the purpose of reviewing the proposed 22, 23 school budget. School budget will be voted on by secret referendum ballot on Tuesday, April 26th, at the Acton Town Hall, at which time the polls will be opened from 8:00 AM to 8:00 PM. Copies of the proposed budget will be available beginning on Friday, March 18th, at either the school or the town hall. Questions regarding the budget should be directed to Superintendent Ross. So, um, this public hearing is tomorrow. Because it is your warrant and your election, uh, one of you need to be there to at least open the public hearing and
What time is that again?
Six o'clock.
Six o'clock, yeah.
The superintendent, uh, they were prepared for you to turn it over to them for their presentation, but it is technically your hearing, public hearing.
Can you make it?
I gotta figure that out. I will try my hardest.
I, I'm pretty sure I can.
We'll be there. I may be a few minutes late, but I'll be there.
Uh, next is notice of nomination papers. Again, uh, these have been available and they have run in the newspaper and been posted according to, to law, but because I haven't seen you guys. So town of Acton nomination papers, nomination papers for the following seats are now available in the town clerk's office and must be returned no later than 4:00 PM on Friday, April 15th, 2022, with a minimum of 25, but no more than 100 signatures of registered Acton voters. One Board of Selectmen, assessor and overseer of the poor, three-year term. David Winchell Jr.'s term is expiring. One school committee member, three-year term. Amanda Cobb's term is expiring. One road commissioner, District 1, three-year term. William Langley's term is expiring. The election of officers will be held on Tuesday, June 14th, 2022. Questions regarding nomination papers should be directed to the town clerk. We also have running our transfer station handy person position. This is, um, the similar, same similar ad. Uh, the only thing that we took out was the, um, cleaning piece of it. Um, the weekly cleaning was taken out, just until you guys got together and made a decision, but the hours and the, uh, pay and everything was left the same. Also during, um, also during the, um, last couple of weeks, we have put together and posted a rec director position, which reads, uh, "The town of Acton is currently accepting resumes for the position of a recreational director. This position is responsible for overseeing all aspects of the rec program, including but not limited to basketball, baseball, cheering, soccer, swimming, and the Christmas tree lighting. Specifically, the director will work closely with the town's appointed recreation committee and will be responsible for the scheduling of games, assignment of teams, coach selections, use of maintenance field, purchasing and overseeing and preparing, preparing the approved budget. This is a flat stipend position that is expected to be approximately 15 to 20 hours per week and reports to the Board of Selectmen. The chosen candidate will have strong people skills, communication skills, and the ability to pass a background check. Persons interested in this position should contact the town administrator for more information or can submit a resume too." Blah, blah, blah. Okay, so that's open and ready to go. Uh, ARPA funds, public hearing. We need to set a couple of dates. I'm gonna recommend that we, um, just do it before, um, before a selectman's meeting. You can maybe delegate the first half hour or so and just see what kind of turnout you get. Um, the question for you guys is how many do you want to have? How many public hearings do you want to have for this fiscal year?
For the ARPA funds?
Correct.
We have to figure out how many we want.
Well, I mean, I gotta post them. I mean, you want just me to post one?
Well, I don't know.
I mean, you can.
Right now.
I mean, if we post one, see how it goes, and if there's need, then we'll post another one.
Yeah, 'cause I mean, it's, it's not a rush on the ARPA funds right now.
Well, we have to have a public hearing because you're using, because you're proposing to use some of it, so we need to give them the opportunity, at least one. You can take all that in and, and stick with your decision that you're kind of leaning towards. Maybe something else will come up. I mean.
Yeah.
Well, we could do at least maybe two, I guess, then, at least if we need it. If we don't, can we just?
Yeah, I mean, you can.
A timeline.
Yep.
So just in case there's something that you hear that you want to move forward, you know, in this year, do you want to do one on Wednesday, April 6th?
So the first one will be when?
Wednesday, April 6th.
6.
At what, 5?
I know, I would do it at 6. I'll try to keep a light agenda and just let it take the first half hour. It's a Wednesday.
Yeah.
So you'll be here anyways, if you're ready to meet.
Yeah, no, I'm just, just trying to think whether or not it'd be beneficial to do one in between then and town meeting, whether or not. Because if we come up with some sort of idea, you know, something comes up that's really cool or whatever, we decide, you know, maybe we want to go for it, we would have, we'd probably want to have to have another one before town meeting.
Well, so, and I'm thinking about the warrant. I mean, we, we are scheduled to meet with the Warren and Finance on the 4th to go over everything, you know, in-house. So if we have the public hearing on the 6th and you hear something that really jumps at you, we are planning on releasing the warrant to them on the 11th.
Yeah, so we'd have you right on it.
Right. And again, I mean, there's nothing to say that you can't take in all of these recommendations and ideas. The law just says you have to have them. I mean, you take them in and even if you decide that you want to, um, maybe have a special town meeting down the road, you know, it doesn't mean you have to act on it in this June warrant, but because you're anticipating spending some of it, you do need to have a public hearing.
At least on what we're spending.
Well, a public hearing to take voter input on just what they would spend it on.
Okay, yep.
Does that, Tom, what are you thinking?
I think, I think that's fine. Uh, you're saying April 6th, uh, 6 o'clock?
Yeah, and we'll just try to make it a, you know, a short selectman's meeting and we'll, I mean, the public hearing, you know, may only go a half hour, so it.
We've done it before. We've had it before the selectman's meeting.
All right, so April 6th. No, 4th, no, 6th. All right, and the very last thing, most important, is a reminder of our big yard sale coming up on April 3rd. I have a couple of tables left. I know Will, he's smiling over there. Got a table for you. A couple of tables left. Make sure you plan on coming out. A lot of good people coming. And what's been phenomenal about this dear town of Acton is that as soon as some people realized it was to benefit neighbors helping neighbors, I've got a group of ladies that, I'm gonna say a group of, group of people. I, I think a majority of them are ladies, but I don't want to take anything away from them, that have asked me if they could run a huge bake sale so that all the profits go to, um, the neighbors helping neighbors. And there are some phenomenal cooks in this town and they are bringing some lovely dishes. So if, even if you don't want the yard sale items.
What time does it start again?
Come and support that. Um, I'd say 8:30, 8:30 to 1:30, something like that. I'll get you a flyer.
All right.
You want a table?
Maybe.
Okay.
Can I bring anything?
Anything you want, okay.
Trying to clean the house out. I got some books.
Perfect. That's all I have, Mr. Chairman.
Okay, I guess we'll skip down to department head, committee chair updates. Do we have any?
I think Mr. Long is gonna.
I'd like to talk just for a second, uh, about, uh, meetings that the Warren Finance Committee have had. First off, uh, it's been a pleasure meeting with all the departments. And I, and I understand that the Warren Finance hasn't, uh, voted on anything yet because obviously we haven't had a warrant to vote on. But some of the things that have come up through, uh, the budgets, um, for example, the one we had last week with the fire chief, I believe, with the conversations that the Warren Finance Committee, uh, would support a $5 increase, uh, for the fire, fires. He did a great presentation on all the reasons why, you know, he thought it was right. The other thing that I would like to see, again, this is just my opinion. This isn't a, a vote of anything. I also believe that the Warren Finance Committee would support a $5 per hour increase for the road commissioners. This pay has been at $30 for five years. They would also, I believe, from the conversation, support, um, bringing the labor rate up for $4 from 18 to, I think it was 22. The equipment rates, I, I think is a, something that needs a lot more discussion. With a $4 to $5 an hour increase in that. But I just wanted to give you an update on how the Warren Finance Committee, uh, the impression I have on, on the way that they're leading and what they would support.
So I got a question. I'm sure you can answer this. So I'm pretty familiar with the road budget stuff and the rates and stuff. So seeing, um, we're, right, right now, we're recommending a 7%, which would be 32 whatever an hour for the road commissioners. And then there's four, $5 increases on the equipment down the line. Now, and when you figure the employee slash equipment, a lot of the times the employee is running the equipment, don't you think that getting a $2 increase there and then a $5 increase here, wouldn't that be a $7 increase per hour?
A $2 for the labor.
Road commissioner for the, you know, the 7% that we're putting forward. The labor, I believe we recommended going up on the labor for the flagger and stuff. We were going up to 22, I believe, is what we were talking.
I agree.
Yeah.
You're right, David, but my understanding was, when, when I first saw this, I thought it was just the increase for the flagger, that labor.
That, that, that rate was, um, for labor rate. And that was flagger slash laborer.
Right.
Yeah.
But since then, it's been my understanding that they want to give an increase for the operator at $4 an hour too.
Yeah.
Well, that's different than, you, you know, me from what you're saying, you know?
But no, what I'm saying is, well, that's the problem. Okay, so, so you're bringing up, okay, so if we giving a $4 increase to, to the operator and a $5 increase to a piece of shit, it's a $9 increase on that piece of equipment, correct? Because they get paid as one, right?
Yes.
Yeah. It'd be different if it was back in the day when we used to pay for the, uh, employees separate and we'd pay all their taxes and stuff, but now what you're doing is, um, an operator, um, and a piece of equipment, okay, it's all merged into one anyways.
Right.
So they're getting their raise.
It's all.
They're all getting a raise. If you start giving everything a raise and you start adding it all up, that raise gets large.
Exactly. And that, and that's why the rate increase in the equipment.
Yeah.
I mean, honestly, I mean, you've been in business long enough that if I was working for you and you were, uh, you hired up for a job and this is what you're getting for me and the piece of equipment, which is the standard rate you charge, it's between you and me how much profit you make on that equipment and how much you're gonna pay me as a wage.
We all, we all got a formula, what we charge, and I wouldn't work for the rates on those, that paper.
Yeah.
They, they get two-thirds of what I get.
Yeah. No, I appreciate that, but.
That's why I don't complain about the rates, because I see what they're working for at the minute rates, what they're working for compared to what we get out, out there. So.
Like I said, um, I'm just telling you what I, I believe the perspective of the Warren Finance Committee. And it's obviously up to you guys, uh, what rate you put forward.
You like, what, with the Finance War Committee, I know I, I missed the one on Monday. And that was fire department and I, I pretty much, we had our literature, so I was, I don't know how that all went, but, um.
And they, Warren Finance hasn't seen what you guys put together as far as all the data.
Yeah. So, um, but as we, as we've gone through the budget, so we'll, we'll start, we'll, we'll stay with the road commissioners right now, because that's what we're talking about. Where on the line item concerns you the most, concerns the committee the most?
I would, I would say, um, the $4 to $5 increase. And from myself personally as chairman or as Warren Finance Committee member, the rate increase for loading sand down there to San Shing.
Loading sand.
I think that's, when you figure out, we can have the conversation another time, but.
Yeah, 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 yeah.
I just wanted to give you guys an idea of what I believe is the consensus of the Warren Finance Committee and what direction they, what they're looking at.
And your committee feels that the, the 7% wasn't a suffice number for the, um, road commissioners' wages themselves?
To watch, you're not enough.
Right.
Okay.
That doesn't, that's what I.
Yeah. I mean, we, what we did as a commi, as a board, and we looked at, um, you know, because we're looking, trying, trying to go across the board. We, we had a little hiccups here and there, but, you know, we were looking at the, uh, state rate. Plus, pretty much what we did was we did state rate plus 7% came out to the 32, whatever it is. I can't remember the sensor off the top of my head. They're just a little bit below, um, a dollar or something, below, um, Shapley at this point. And so I think what we're trying, well, at least what I am as, as a chair, is what, what I'm trying to do is trying to get everybody on a scale where we don't have the, road commissioners getting paid $30 an hour for five years. They get paid 3% or 4% like everybody does every year, so they stays up with the wages instead of having to do this large $10 jump like, like, you know, what, what was asked for. So we can get them on a pay scale. Um, so by the time you do the 7%, then you do a 3% next year, a 3% the year after, and, and go on and then there, you know, they'll be well above that, uh, state rate. They'll be well above Shapley at that rate. You know, unless the state turns around and adjusts the rate, then, then, then you got another issue. So we're, we're just trying to be fair with what we have. And, you know, when we put forward a warrant to you guys to vote on, you know, that's, that's what you guys could consider that. We're, we're trying to, we're trying to run this as a, a business, which it is. And, um, and I do, I do, I do understand your concerns on the equipment side of it. Uh, because it's hard whenever you see a, a increase of $5 or $10 an hour on anything. It's, it's shell-shocking, but at the same time, um, you know, with, with my experience on having to buy equipment, maintain it, and, you know, fuel bills at thousands of dollars a month, you know, it, it, there's a justification behind it. And I, I didn't find anything that was too shocking.
I, I guess the $4 increase, for example, I was, I understood it as that this was going to be a $4 increase that they were going to be paying their operators. That, that's how, that's how I took it.
Yeah, and I wish I, I got, I even got my book right in front of me here.
And just to give a $4, I understand it with a flagger laborer, but to give road department a $4 increase for their operators and only give the road commissioner a $2 increase, it just, we're out of this discussion. I just.
Yeah, well, no, and I understand, because I'm, I'm looking at it right now and, um, equipment oper, equipment with operator, $22 an hour. Uh, equipment with no op, uh, laborer with no equipment, uh, $22.81. So I believe because all these line items already have the equipment in them, it's already clumped in. We, we talked about that the other night at the Finance Committee, because there was confusion, because you guys were trying to take the Shapley rates and compare them and you really can't unless you add in the, the truck, uh, the laborer or driver rate. But I believe that rate there, it would be for the, um, you know, running a power tool such as a chainsaw or something like that, because there would have to be that, because, um, uh, well, you know, that doesn't even make sense.
Let's see.
We, we, we might have to, we might have to look into that, but.
Thank you very much.
Yeah, okay. Anybody else?
Uh, Will Lang, District 1. Uh, Tuesday, uh, we picked up some trees up on Acton Brio that came down, um, the past couple of windstorms. And then also we, uh, fixed the god rail up here on D-3.
Good job. Yes, you did.
Nice, nice. Anybody else? No. Okay. I guess we're gonna skip down old business here. Medical director position.
So that stays on until next week? Please, please read the email that I sent you.
Yep. Okay. RFP audit.
Just noticed I skipped B. Um, uh, audit is still out until March 30th?
Okay, um, I guess we're all set with that one then.
Is that the same with the siding too?
No, the siding.
That's next.
David has his changes to go over.
Well, I just got concerns. Whether or not there are changes, I'm not sure, whether we make them, but I do have concerns with the, um, the, uh, sign RFP. So we'll go to RFP siding, uh, where I just had it right here. So going through the, um, the bid sheet here, um, I just made a couple of notations, like, uh, let's see here, uh, preparation of paintwork. I just wanted to make sure that, um, we added on like for the, uh, town, that they can use our, our transfer station for the disposal of the stuff back here. Might cut some costs. You know what I mean? So they don't have to worry about taking it to Simpsons or whatever. Payment incentives. A little concerned about, uh, let's see here, additional work. If the project is not completed. If the project is not completed by completion date, a per day penalty may be assessed. If the per day penalty clause is enacted by the town, the cost of the general contractor shall be two hundred and seventy-five dollars per day. But at down below, it gives exemptions and this and that, and I don't know, it's, I just don't want to scam people off.
Well, no, but, and I get that.
And the way people right now are, you know, you, you call, you call, um, Darren Lumber or something, and, and you can't get materials or something, whatever, but.
We also don't want somebody that's gonna start a job and not finish it, which unfortunately we see a lot.
Yeah. Well, you know, they can.
We can take the whole, that whole piece out if that's what the board wants.
I'm just worried that, you know, the average sign guy is usually a one or two guy operation, you know, a lot of them are.
Do we still have Tom here?
Ooh, um, no, I don't know.
Yes, I'm here.
Okay.
I'm here.
Somebody else was trying to call, that's why.
Oh.
Forgot about you, Tom. I'm just worried that we might be deflecting some of the small guys off with some stuff like this here, you know?
So, just, so you want to adjust it so that there's no, no penalty if they don't meet the end date? I mean, we're just gonna, we're gonna hold the last check anyway, so that could, that's gonna be enough to.
We don't usually pay them if they ain't finished the job.
Right, so, all right.
So, by, when you add stuff in here, and I'm Joe Schmo, and I got all kinds of work, and I see that, well.
Nope, I mean, we're gonna hold the final check until it's been inspected, so that's fine, I can adjust that.
That, I'm just, I'm just trying to make this more bitter friendly. Everything else is fine.
How long, how long is the job supposed to take?
I bet with a couple of crew, I mean, what is it gonna take? Adam, Joe, I'm thinking a couple of days, tops?
Three, four days. With the paint.
Three, four days, yeah.
A little tongue.
Right, the trim has to be, but.
You know, and, and also, too, is, you also got the, the issue that they may come into other stuff. You know, so that might put a.
I mean, a couple of weeks. And the weather obviously plays a part in it, but.
Yeah, so, you know, I just, I don't know, I just wanna, when we send this out, I don't want anybody to look at and go, oh, jeez, you know?
I gotta, I gotta tell you, David, I, I'm not a big fan of those kind of penalties. I think, uh, is there a retainage on the project or how, um, what's the payment schedule? Did they get anything upfront, or is it all waited, do we wait till it's all complete?
Well, I don't, there's nothing in here that tells when the payment is, you know, I think a lot of what happens is whoever bids on it will give us a proposal of what they believe they want for payment schedule.
Do you want to give them ten percent down to start the job, to buy the material and the rest of the completion?
I wouldn't, I wouldn't do that. I would let the contractor determine what they feel and let us determine, because we dictate and say ten percent, some people might want more than that. I, I want to make, make this more front, you know, contractor friendly, so we might actually get some.
So, but are you, I mean, do you guys support all of those specs in there about what type of paint? And I mean, can have that vary? I just don't want to, we put a lot of work into that.
Well, no, 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 everything else is fine. I was just worried about, I just don't want to deter anybody from bidding.
Okay. All right, I'll just.
Yeah, I agree.
I'll adjust the payment piece of it, and then we'll be good to post it?
Yeah.
Okay. And Tom, did you have anything else on it?
No, I think, I think, uh, I agree with David's comments, I'll play with it back.
Okay, where am I here? Okay, we're all set with that one?
Mm-hmm.
Where are we now? Recreation, Director Job Description.
Yep, which I think I read under the update, so we'll leave that under Old News.
Yep.
Old Business.
Budget discussions?
So, just to recap, um, because we're in an actual meeting, and that's where all of your decisions get made. So, we are moving forward with getting warrant articles together, um, giving a seven, seven percent increase across the board, with the exception of the fire department, who are doing, the fire chief will get a seven percent increase, but all of the positions will get two dollars and fifty cents. And then the, um, health officer stipend, uh, is going up to five hundred dollars. Everything else salary-wise is in there, uh, is, is a seven percent. You didn't make any cuts out of roads, transfer stations, the only, we took the bathroom out of the wreck, but we're leaving a thousand dollars in for a subject plan design, and putting forty thousand back into the parking lot. And I'm gonna start working with Will on an actual sketch and something to bring back to you. Capital improvement, uh, the reserve funds you guys agreed on, the hundred thousand for the West Shore, no, a hundred thousand for Row, two hundred for West Shore Drive. And we're gonna put two hundred in, what we're calling a public works capital improvement, until next week, when you guys can talk about whether or not that public work should be in there. We paid down some debt, and we're just gonna kind of get a draft together and see what that looks like, correct?
Yeah.
Did I miss anything?
Sounds good.
Okay, remember they said that. Keep the.
Yeah, yeah, you know, all the different, um, um, like this AWAR and all that, we keep that all the same on.
Uh, no, social services, social services is going on next week's agenda, when Mr. Tom is back with us, and.
I was gonna wonder what we were, okay.
That's the other thing, good catch.
Okay. Couldn't remember what I was talking about.
So, we'll take care of that right before we decide to vote on the warrant.
Yeah, next week's selectmen's meeting, so it'll still, you know what I mean?
Okay. I'm gonna hop down to new business, West Shore Drive, Culver.
We've got some news.
West Shore Drive, we have, William, has, I sent you via email, um, a very lengthy report, uh, engineering report from Ransom. You guys have had time to go through it. There is money in the Bridge Culver account to pay for this bill, I think it was thirty thousand, William?
Yeah.
You want to give them, they've all read it, so you don't need to go through page by page, but do you want to give them a synopsis of it?
Uh, yeah, the, uh, you guys see the breakdown for the survey and.
Yeah.
It's all.
I have breakdown right down, and that's, and that's, I know we're gonna be doing that.
I'm sorry, Will, would you mind speaking into the mic, please?
That's all, you just go speak up.
Um, yeah, that number there's for the surveying, for the designs, um, you know, permit, the whole nine yards, and then, and they're just talking about the permitting process and what they'll do, you know? Bid, you know, we go, when we go out to bid, you know, they usually have a big meeting, you know, you guys, the people from Ransom, you know, look at the bid before they go out. Quite a detailed process, so. And then also, on Friday, the ready-up meeting hours coming out, and she just wants to look at the culmination of it. You guys signed that tonight, they're doing a sweep, the survey is coming, we're gonna start surveying, and after that, we're gonna take new commissions and have, and start working on the plans.
Excellent, nice. And the one thing I didn't see, um, is the payment breakdown of when they're going to be paid.
Well, it's in there. I thought it started there.
So, ransom will send invoices electronically to the email we provide, okay? So, they're gonna bill us after each one of these items are done, one by one, is that how I understand it? Okay. So, we pay for the survey afterwards.
I can't find it, I'll find it.
That's on page four.
Is it page four? There it is.
And towards the end, you'll, we'll plan a big public, um, public hearing slash meeting, bring in everybody. And that's the meeting that I think it was Tom, one of you, um, we talked about doing an actual mailing. To make sure that, or it was David, one of you talked about doing a mailing when we got to that public hearing. To make sure everybody, everybody within five hundred feet. That was Kim.
Well, you, you gotta anyways, I, I, you should anyways. Anybody butters or anything like that.
Whatever you said, yeah. So, we'll, we'll want to work as that gets closer. I mean, I don't know how long this whole pro, do they give you any idea how long this is gonna take from start to finish? Roughly.
Probably a week and a half to survey, so, I mean.
Are we talking a couple of months out? Okay. Well, just so I don't, I don't want to forget it.
I'll, I'll update the board.
Well, the process is gonna take a while.
We just need time for that, that's all I'm saying.
Because even after they get the surveying done, um, they got the permit and process, they gotta roll through everything, then you got the, you know, it's, it's gonna take quite a while.
I'm sure, you know, it's gonna be, you know, why don't you meet and then, because I get plenty of them spread on.
But we just want to advertise them and have them here. Okay. All right, so with that said, we're looking for a motion to sign this ransom.
Oh, yeah, where's the number four there? You need a.
Yeah, I've got the actual.
Why don't you do this?
You have the page?
So, I'm gonna make a motion that we accept ransom's total estimated cost at thirty thousand, seven hundred dollars.
I'll second that. All in favor? Okay.
All right.
You just sent me that sign.
Yeah, so we've got some stuff we gotta fill in there on the, um. Yeah, because we got the page before that, we need to fill out all the billing options and all that, so. Is it, can I wait till tomorrow?
You can do that, no, no problem.
I'll get it to you tomorrow.
All right, thank you.
Thank you.
School budget warrant.
Yes, school budget warrant. All right, so this is the warrant, all the recommendations are on there from the school committee, warrant and finance, both committees voted unanimously, unanimously to support all the articles as written. So, the numbers have been proofed and double-proofed by everybody, but it is, as always, your warrant, so.
Do you want to look at this real quick?
Yeah.
We're gonna make a motion tonight, almost, don't we?
Yeah.
Yep. So, I'll make a motion that we accept the special town meeting warrant. Do I need to read this whole thing out?
No, just the, the date, the school budget.
This is on for this one. The date will be April twenty-sixth, two thousand twenty-two, at eight o'clock in the morning, to act on the follow, following articles. Read them out.
Yeah, you don't have to.
Okay. So, summarize of total authorized school budget expenditures would be eight million, I mean, uh, sorry, take that back, five million, eight hundred and sixty thousand, eight hundred and sixteen dollars. And raise the sum of four million, nine hundred, sixty-eight thousand dollars, two hundred and fifty-seven, for the two thousand twenty-two, two thousand and twenty-three school budget.
I'll second that. All in favor? Okay.
So, you have the ransom one that you've been signing?
I just hand it back to you. We didn't sign it.
I haven't signed it yet.
We didn't sign it.
You didn't sign the ransom?
No, we just accepted it, but we didn't.
Oh, yeah, we need to, I thought you had to fill out some stuff. Well, I do, but if you can go ahead and just sign, all you gotta do is sign on the signature page, both of you, and I'll type in the rest.
Okay.
Just, I'll print and type it all in with the date and page number.
So.
I'll do that next.
So, we have an executive session, would you like to have a public comment first?
I think so.
So, we're gonna, uh, we got an executive session, so what we're gonna do is we're gonna do a public comment first. Uh, any public comment?
As a citizen interacting, um, and looking at the news, constantly bombarded, uh, through the state of Maine with all the smaller towns that are losing fire departments, that are asking, um, other towns farther away to be able to help, uh, hit fires or whatever. And listening to Fire Chief and what he requested, I would have to ask that that would be granted, that his request would be granted. And I, I see that you guys have that seven percent. I just think that everything, that's the way everything is going right now, and all the news is out there, I mean, it is critical, I believe.
The two fifty was for the fire department, so they agreed not to give them just seven percent, which was about a dollar. They took the five dollar request that he, he asked for and, and gave them two fifty, because they took all of the towns that he provided, and they averaged them. And at seven percent, acting would have been at, at the minimum. They would, they would have met the minimum, we would have been the same as everybody. Giving them two fifty makes them average, so they'd be making the same as all the other towns.
We're, we're, we're gonna be right with.
Giving them five, they're gonna be above.
Scabro, Gorum, Wyndham.
Westbrook.
Westbrook.
You know, we made sure we were.
When we looked at the, at the actual numbers, if we had given the five, they would have been paid more than most towns. And I know what you're talking about with all these fire departments, but you're gonna, you know, it's not apples and apples here, at all, okay? The, we, we are paying right up there with the big towns. The, the, the fire departments you're talking about are these volunteer fire departments where they can't get nobody. And then you have other towns who just won't put the money up. Town of Acton puts a lot of money up, and, and the fire department gets everything they ask for most of the time. So, um, we're just making a concession here, we're just trying to stay with everybody else. And, you know, because, like we were saying before, you know, we're gonna be doing, we, we like to do that three percent thing, boom, boom, boom. Instead of doing these large raises all at once, the five dollar an hour raises, we're trying to get everybody to where they should be, but we don't want to go. We, we think we made a concession by going to the two fifty from the seven percent.
Yeah, because they.
And we were gonna be at a five-nine, right, right, Tom? We were looking at five-nine originally. So, you know, we've, we've gone up considerably from what we originally were proposed, proposing to do. So, and we looked at the data, and the data says that, hey, um, these guys are gonna be well compensated compared to all the other towns in the area, so.
Question on the warrant you guys signed. You can, right, about, uh, five point eight million. Is the hundred thousand dollar, um, request on that warrant?
Yes, it's Article Five, she only, she gave you the, um, total appropriation for the school budget. She didn't go through each article, but yes, Article Five is to see if the town will vote to appropriate a hundred thousand dollars from the town's unassigned fund balance to the school's designated reserve capital account, and to expend the funds from the reserve account.
I just want to make sure that people understood.
Yep.
With that hundred thousand, yeah.
Yes, good one.
Thank you.
Thanks, Dennis.
Hold on, we're in trouble now.
Robin Ham, Act Fair, um, the seventy-five thousand dollars that we put ahead for the old station to be torn down. I thought we made a recommendation at town floor, and if we didn't, how come we put the seventy-five thousand dollars away?
We made a recommendation, there was no recommendation to tear the building down.
It was not?
No.
No, it was just to put money aside, so.
Once we figured out what we were going to. For the parking lot project. It's called the parking lot project. The conversation has been that it's gonna come down.
That's fine, I mean, we, and, you know, and right now, we're, you know, we're looking at the pros and cons and trying to, we want to come up with a plan.
Right, right, and I thought we did at town meeting last year.
No, that was, that was, nope. Okay, um, any more public comment? Okay, I guess we're gonna, uh.
I'll make a motion that we go into executive session four oh five, six dash A dash one.
I'll second that, all in favor? Okay. I'll be out in a little bit. Okay, do I hear a motion?
I'll make a motion that we come out of executive session four oh five, six dash A dash one.
I'll second that, all in favor? Okay, we'll go down to announcements here. March twenty-third, Board of Selectmen's meeting, uh, six P M. March twenty-fourth, Board of Selectmen Public Hearing, uh, school budget, five A.
Six o'clock, I thought it said six.
That's, what, what I said?
It is, it's supposed to be six, it's just a typo.
Yeah, there's a typo here, six P M. at the school.
Hard to find, good help.
March twenty-fourth, Planning Board Meeting, six P M. March twenty-sixth, Mary Grant Meeting, uh, at Mary Grant, three P M. March twenty-eighth, Warrant Finance, six P M. March twenty-ninth, Road Committee, six P M. March thirtieth, Capital Improvement Committee, four thirty P M. And March thirtieth, Board of Selectmen, six P M. And that would be all.
Are we, are we meeting again for budget workshops next?
No.
Okay. Because I'm just looking at the.
Yeah, I'm, we're done, as far as I understand it, other than the wording of that article. I understand that we're done.
I, I think we are.
Good job, we're only three weeks behind.
Okay.
I, uh, we'll make a motion that we adjourn.
I'll second that, all in favor?